I think it's seven o'clock. We are on, so I'd like to open the meeting and read possibly for the last time, the following announcement. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded and are being recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. So is anyone recording? If so, please speak or at least raise your hand and request to be recognized. Seeing none, I note for the record that the members of the select board participating in the meeting today are Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Is anyone prepared to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 25, 2021?
I'm happy to make that motion, Joe. The ones on the vote sheet are from May 14th and June 3rd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But did we do 25 yet? I mean, I saw the ones that came over with your edits that I read this afternoon.
Michelle, we do have a conflict because the vote shows May 14th, the agenda shows May 25.
I believe it's supposed to be May 25th. Sharon did send that around with some edits.
Yes.
Okay.
It is May 25th.
So it looks like, so I will make a motion to approve the minutes dated May 25, 2021.
I'll second. All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Moving on to the minutes of June 3rd, 2021. Anyone prepared to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I am. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated June 3rd, 2021.
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. They are both approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the application for change of ownership percentage interests for Paragon Funding Group III LLC DBA Wahlburgers, 19 Shipyard Drive. So let's see, do we have, is Alan McKenna available?
Joe, before we start, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Alan, if you could walk us through what's going on here?
Thank you. Again, my name is Alan McKenna. I'm the chief legal and administrative officer for Wahlburgers here in Hingham. We are filing a application to change our ownership percentage based on an internal transaction in which the company is redeeming or buying back the Class B membership interest held by Elizabeth Van Zura through the Elizabeth Van Zura Trust. So it's a fairly straightforward transaction in which the company is redeeming that interest. Because it holds a liquor license, obviously, we need approval of the liquor license authority for the updated ownership percentages. We've submitted the fee to the ABCC and all the materials to you. And there's an exhibit to the application that shows the existing ownership and the proposed new ownership, as well as the other interests held by these entities. Most of the ownership in this entity, well, I shouldn't say that. The entity at issue is 100% owned by a holding company. The holding company is owned by various LLCs and a couple individuals, and all of that ownership is spelled out in the application. And so we are not bringing on any new people. We are just moving around the percentages within the holding company based upon us retiring that exhibit, I'm sorry, that Class B interest held by the Van Zura Trust.
Thank you. This does not appear to be the type of application that really triggers a lot of examination, review, or concern on the part of the town. Bill, do you have any questions?
No, just comment. Alan, how are you?
Good to see you. Hey, how are you?
Good to see you. I very much appreciate the thoroughness of the application. I read it over. You did a great job putting everything together. I am, I have no questions. I'm happy for a motion when you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Any members of public have any questions about this? Hearing and seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve the request of Paragon Funding Group III LLC's DBA Wahlburgers, 19 Shipyard Drive, for a change of ownership percentage interests as outlined in their ABCC application dated May 13, 2021, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second, and I know Liz is going to be abstaining, so I'll take a vote. Bill?
Aye.
Joe? Aye, and please record for the record that Liz Klein has abstained. That action passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a request to transfer the entertainment license from Legal Seafood LLC DBA Legal Sea Bar to LSF Hingham LLC DBA Legal Sea Bar, 94 Derby Street. Is Donna Cruz on the line for this?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Donna.
Hi.
Would you mind stepping us through this request, please?
Yes, yes. So my name is Donna Cruz, and I'm a paralegal with LSF Hingham LLC. Legal Seafood LLC has been bought out by LSF Hingham, and we're simply looking to transfer the entertainment license from the old company to the new company, LSF Hingham.
So this does not involve any change with respect to a liquor license? Is that correct?
We have already transferred the liquor license. That's been approved, and we have it on the premises.
So the current request has nothing to do with any change other than for the entertainment?
Yeah, just to change the name on the entertainment license. Nothing else has changed.
And food is still as good as ever?
I think it's even better.
Oh, great. Terrific. Liz Klein, any comments or questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
Just one question, Donna. What was the date of the purchase of the company?
December, the new company opened, started operation on December 22, 2020.
Okay, so back up. Excellent. Well, best of luck.
Thank you.
Terrific. Do any members of the public have questions on this matter? Seeing none, I will accept the motion.
So I would make, I would make a motion to approve the transfer of the entertainment license from Legal Seafood LLC DBA Legal Sea Bar, 94 Derby Street, to LSF Hingham LLC DBA Legal Sea Bar, 94 Derby Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
We come to vote. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher? Aye. That is passed. Thank you. And Donna, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a review of the application for outside table service for Locales Tacos, 6 Crow Point Lane. This is a request for outside table service and a modification of the liquor license. Do we have, is Doug McGregor on?
Brian McLaughlin's here.
Oh, I see Brian is, is Doug going to be on or not?
Doug, can you see me here?
Oh, there, okay, great. Would you please walk us through this? What is being proposed?
Brian, you mind going ahead? Yeah, sure. So we're asking for an outdoor seating permit or for the opening of a new restaurant over at 6 Crow Point Lane. There are eight spots on the west side or the west facade of our building that we're asking to turn into what would be a 40-person maximum outdoor seating. I think we've, in our proposal, we've asked that we would put jersey barriers to protect the patrons and just to provide that kind of outdoor experience that I think everyone this past year, comes a year and a half, has kind of grown accustomed to. I think after speaking with the neighbors close to us, it sounds like they're equally as excited as we are. And from my understanding and from the hands-on or place today, when I walked around, everybody seemed very excited to have that opportunity to dine outside, and they were totally in favor themselves of us having that. So we're basically asking, so before we open, we'd love to have all of our ducks in a row and know exactly how we're going forward to open up this restaurant to the town of Hingham. As you guys know, you have one shot to open a restaurant, and you know, as we can amend stuff as we go, we'd love to do it in the best possible way and give the best impression we can. So this is, this is our request.
Thank you. Is Emily Whitworth on the line? I'm not sure I see her. Michelle, do you see her or am I missing?
Yes, she's here, just unmuting herself momentarily.
Sorry about that. Yes, Emily Whitworth, present. Hello.
What review was done of this application?
The restaurant reopening working group met collectively to discuss the project. The group includes representatives from the police department, fire department, building department, the zoning board, the select board, and special real estate council. So we reviewed it from, oh, and I apologize, the health department. We reviewed it for public safety and public health code compliance, handicapped accessibility. And then, you know, while the, during the state of emergency and extensions thereto remains ongoing, zoning technically doesn't apply, but for practical reasons, we want to ensure that, you know, displacement of parking spaces in particular won't burden the overall capacity for these, the properties in the area. So no significant concerns were raised by any members of the group, and we just had pretty much the standard conditions that have been imposed on other outdoor table service areas.
How does the governor's recent order rescinding his prior order on the state of emergency affect this application, if at all?
Yeah. So right now, there is an extension while the state of emergency will be lifted next week. Outdoor table service areas can remain in operation and can continue to be permitted through August 15th. There is also pending legislation that may further extend that. It just hasn't been enacted at this time.
So if that legislation is not enacted, what will happen come August 15th?
So as of August 15th, then zoning basically will come back into effect. So those parking spaces could not be displaced by a patio area, absent some relief through a special permit process being granted by the planning board. Other spaces could potentially remain in effect as long as the overall seating capacity, the permitted use of the property isn't exceeded. But it probably would require modifications of both use permits and parking permits, potentially site plan review, applications as well by the planning board and the zoning board.
Yep. So my assumption is that Doug and Brian are aware of that limitations. They'll be tracking what's going on with the legislation, and hopefully it passes, but if it does not, this restaurant as well as others really need to proactively make sure that they take whatever steps need to be taken with the town so they can continue operation. Because I know residents do enjoy the outdoor service, and we'd like it to continue, but we need the restaurant owners to be filing whatever applications are required as the laws progress. Emily, would you mind sharing on the screen the maps? I think there are two maps or diagrams on the application, just so we can see how this is going to work.
Sure, certainly.
Emily, happy Taco Tuesday, everybody.
Yes.
Sorry, just tricky to navigate the multiple screens that we need. Okay, so this is their packet, which, nope, that's the letter of support. Bear with me.
There we go.
Yep. And then let me rotate this for you.
Can you shrink it a little bit so we can see?
Yeah. Shrink it, I'm sorry.
There we go. So in other words, we can see the road. So there's Crow Point Lane on the right. And so where, how is the parking going to work here? And where's the seating going to be?
So there's two principal patio areas or outdoor table service areas. This one closest to, you know, the rear of the building from Crow Point Lane that would be displacing parking spaces, that's the one that would be surrounded by a fence to meet ABCC regulations, and customers would be able to order alcoholic beverages in this area. In this green landscaped area, there would also be, I believe, three picnic tables set up. This area would, would not, there would be no service of alcohol in this, this area.
And I'm not seeing, and I don't think we need, a special path for people to access restrooms?
We don't need it under the COVID regulations any longer. There, there will be a break, and bear with me, I think there's a, this might showed a little bit better, a break in the barriers next to the building wall where there's a hostess table so that people in this area can easily access the building, you know, in the same way that any, you know, that handicapped people would access the building.
Okay. Liz Klein, any questions on this?
No questions. I was going to ask if they needed to have restaurants outside of Porta Potty or something, but it sounds like that's no longer necessary. Is that right, Emily?
Yeah, that's correct. Everybody is able to access the restrooms inside, and we no longer have to have that separation because of the expiration of the COVID requirements.
Great. Well, thank you, and to the restaurant reopening committee for doing all of this due diligence.
Yes, thank you.
We're very anxious for this restaurant to open.
Yes.
We do.
Bill, any, any questions?
Lee, thanks for your work on this and to the, to the restaurant working group. Appreciate it. I've been saying this, you know, every time we have one of these permits come in, but just to Brian and Doug, you know, the process that Emily described, it sounds quick, but it's not. You got to get on agendas. The planning board's agenda is very full, and will be, I'm sure, in the fall. So the process that Emily described in terms of the special permits required, you know, it could take several weeks or months. So I would encourage you to, to follow the governor's orders. You know, we can update you with that information as well. It's anticipated that the extension may be, may be out until April of '22, but we'll see what happens with it. And I would second Liz's comment. There's a lot of excitement about your restaurant opening.
Thank you, Bill.
People love tacos in this town, and I'm one of them.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Any questions from members of the public on this? I am seeing no hands raised. So then I'd accept the motion on the application for outside table service from Locales Tacos.
So I'll take this one, Liz, if you want to do the next one or vice versa. So I make a motion that the board approve the outside table service, OTS application, submitted by Locales Taco LLC, DBA Locales Tacos and Tequila. And in accordance with the plan attached heretofore, the approved plan is modified by the applicant's representation made May 26, 2021, and subject to the following conditions. Condition A, site-specific conditions. Curb stops in the parking spaces displaced by the westerly OTS area may need to be removed to allow handicapped access to the building adjacent to the proposal, proposed host station. The applicant shall request an inspection by building officials to confirm prior to opening the OTS area. General conditions. Outside table service shall be permitted in compliance with the approved plan as modified by this approval. The location, size, and layout of the OTS premises approved herein may not be modified without further approval. Any requests for modification must be submitted in writing with detail as to the proposed modifications to restaurant opening at hingham-ma.gov. Three, no amplified sound nor other entertainment shall be permitted in the OTS premises. Four, in accordance with the OTS policy, the OTS premises shall close no later than the earlier of 10:00 PM on Sundays through Thursdays and 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays, or one hour after the kitchen of the establishment closes for food service. Five, addition of amenities such as tents or outdoor heating units is subject to further review and approval. Requests for such amenities shall be sent in writing to restaurantopening@hingham-ma.gov. Six, approval holder shall be responsible for regular cleaning of trash and food in the OTS premises and shall not outlaw trash, food, or other nutrients to accumulate or be deposited intentionally or unintentionally into storm drains. Seven, approval holder shall fully comply with all applicable state and local laws, regulations, and standards, including without limitations. Town of Hingham COVID-19 temporary policy regarding restaurant outdoor table service, Massachusetts COVID-19 mandatory workplace safety standards, Massachusetts COVID-19 safety standards and checklist, restaurants, ABCC advisory regarding guidelines for extension of premises to patio and outdoor areas. Eight, this approval may be subject to additional public safety conditions to ensure the safety of the diners, pedestrians, and vehicles if determined by the town and that an unsafe condition exists once outside table service is in operation. Nine, the establishment may be subject to periodic inspection for compliance with this approval. Failure to comply with this approval may result in suspension or revocation of this approval and in fines according with Massachusetts law.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. And I would now entertain a second vote on this.
Okay, make a motion that the board approve the request of Locales Taco LLC, DBA Locales Taco, and Tequila, 6 Crow Point Lane pursuant to COVID-19 Order Number 35, to temporarily alter the license premises under liquor license number 05675-RS-0528, to expire on the date that is 60 days after the end of the state of emergency, or the date COVID-19 Order Number 50 is modified or rescinded by state action, as defined in the OTS policy, whichever is earlier.
Is there a second?
Second.
All who's in favor? Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Aye. It is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to the opening.
Totally. Good to see you.
And our meetings are always on Taco Tuesday.
Perfect. We'll celebrate every Tuesday.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is to consider and possibly approve the issuance of a series of special one-day wine and malt beverages licenses to Mike Dyer on behalf of Untold Brewing for the Green at Derby Street Shops to be offered on Friday, Saturday, and Sundays beginning on June 18, 2021. And I believe we have Mike Dyer here from Untold Brewing. Do we have also Victoria McGuire?
Yes, Victoria is dialed in, and Sheri Schuler from Derby Street Shops, and Caroline Husberg.
Great. So let's start, Mike, with you or your designee to just walk us through what you're proposing.
I believe Sheri is going to kick it off here for us.
Sure. So first of all, thank you all for the opportunity to present this to you tonight. We're really, really excited to be working with Untold. So coming out of the pandemic, we really want to bring an experience to our green space, which is located in between REI and Kohl's. It's a place where we have a lot of family-friendly activations. I would say 90% of our activations on that green are for children. And this is really a way to support our tenants and work with this amazing brand of Untold to bring a beer garden, a family-friendly community beer garden to the space on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays this summer. We have the full support of our two bigger sit-down restaurants in Burton's Grill and Legal Sea Bar, which we have letters, and we also support from our retail tenants and members of the town of Hingham. So we're, we're really excited about this, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have. Mike, I'm not sure if you want to add anything else.
No, just, just our thanks. Matt Elder is the founder of Untold. You're with, you're with me this evening. We're excited about this opportunity and look forward to putting together a great program that would make, make the town of Hingham proud.
Great. Unlike the prior request that we had, my understanding is this is not dependent on any COVID-19-related state regulations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So with that, Emily, if I can pass the baton to you in terms of walking us through the regulatory issues that need to be considered here?
Sure. So, you know, while this technically is not an outdoor table seating application, the members of the restaurant reopening working group also reviewed this request, simply because, again, it includes representatives of all the departments that would need to ensure public health, safety, and then in this case, because it's not an OTS permit, zoning compliance. So the zoning board in the past has approved certain areas within the Derby Street Shops for outdoor programming or community events. This particular area, the Derby Street Shops calls the green, Sheri noted, is between REI and Kohl's, right here. And here is the originally proposed layout of the temporary events that they're, they're hoping to commence June 18th. In looking at it, we determined that it generally complies with zoning and, and in addition to that, parking permits issued by the planning board and the onsite wastewater treatment plans and permits for the property, with very minor exceptions. So the, the zoning board permits require that a six-foot-wide pathway be maintained between, well, if we go back to this, this plan, the rear parking areas for Derby Street Shops and then the main parking field for Derby Street Shops. So we would suggest a condition to that effect. And then there's a, a small amount of other kind of standard conditions that we have imposed in the past on community events through, again, representatives of the restaurant working group. through, again, representatives of the restaurant working group, such as the sprinkler connection being maintained to the Kohl's side of the building. But otherwise, it looks to comply with permits and we didn't have any significant, you know, concerns about the events. It is, you know, a new model, I guess, that would be offered in that space and a little bit different than events we've seen in the past. So we did consider whether or would offer that the selectman might take a phased approach to permitting the one-day licenses so that we can gain some experience with how it operates on weekends for a few weeks and maybe they can come back in the, you know, after some period of time of operation, just to make sure that, you know, it's compatible with the surrounding businesses and as represented won't create any, you know, other issues for the center.
Thank you. So am I correct that what's going to be served there is beer? And that where, well, let me ask, where will the food be coming from?
So if you pull back, Emily, I can share it or if you want to pull that map back up, I can sort of walk through it.
Sure. The main one or the, like, the specific green one?
This one is, this one's fine. I also have it in color if that's helpful because it shows the six-foot server paths, but I can speak to it on here. And it looks really small. So if you look at the bottom of the green, where there's these two little brackets, those actually say six feet, so that we already are accounting for a six-foot walkway, which is actually concrete, that's the piece of concrete that runs next to the green, will be maintained the entire time. There's also actually six feet in between, on the left side, those darker tables or picnic tables. And the other four tops are similar to what or exactly what Untold has in situ, if you've been there, which is the upside-down wine barrels with Adirondack chairs. So and then also I want to speak to, it also shows that the fire hookup area is in that white area to the left of the shaded. And so that is also shown on this map. Yeah, so like the, go to the left with your cursor, next to the left of check-in, that's where the fire hookup is.
So, but Sherry, where's the food coming from?
So the food will have different types. So Mike and Matt currently serve like different types of snacks, which we will have available to those guests, but also we're encouraging the use of our restaurants, which is why they're all really excited. So getting, you know, food from Burton's or Chipotle or Kava, Legal C Bar, all of which are really willing to, you know, bring food over and/or folks can go pick it up beforehand. And so that's, we're encouraging that. So we'll have, to make it easy for the guests, QR codes with the menus for our restaurants on site so that they can easily access the menus and get meals.
Will they be able to order remotely or do they need to go, for example, to Burton's, walk over there, place the order and then either have it delivered or?
Yeah, well, so they can do either because all of our restaurants and our fast casuals right now do offer some form of online, you know, delivery or pickup service.
And then the path that someone, so suppose it's going to be delivered from Burton's to this location. What path is going to be followed and I guess making sure that we're not causing undue problems with respect to the parking?
Sure. So what I'd like to do is take the, so for Burton's a good example, take the service road on the back and come around behind REI and we could do a pickup near the bar area that's set up.
Or people will just walk it over?
Well, yeah, or they could do that as well.
Come on, this is environmentally conscious Hingham. We will be making sure people
Well, there is a beautiful Long Island that we just added tons of roses to between REI and White Health Market that they can certainly walk along.
Thank you. Emily, can you talk a little bit about the use of one-day permits in this circumstance where it's not really a one-day permit? It's going to be one day, then a next day, then a next day, and then repeating the following week and then the following week. Is that consistent with the legal authority that the select board has in these circumstances?
I do believe the select board has the authority with a cap and this applicant has requested the maximum that they would be able to get in any single year, which is 30 individual special one-day liquor licenses. To the best of my knowledge, and I know Sharon Profetti in your office had done some research on this, the board has not in the past granted up to 30. But additionally, to the best of our knowledge, you haven't received that request. So this would be the most single one-day liquor licenses that the board has granted.
And when you say a 30 cap, that is a limit of 30 per applicant, not total that the board can issue?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes. And yes, so I've looked at that and that is in fact what the select board has the authority to do. And I share your approach of doing this on an incremental basis of doing an initial allotment, see how it works out, make sure that there are not unintended consequences before issuing further permits. Liz Klein, do you have any questions on this?
Quick question. You mentioned the six-feet distance and I think you said it was for the servers. Also just wondering if that makes the Area ADA compliant as well?
Yes, it does. When we originally designed the layout of the tables as well too, and the spacing was set during COVID protocol times and that was not modified thereafter. And so all tables, both left to right in that diagram, as well as top to bottom, are a minimum, in fact, in some cases a little bit further than six feet apart.
Great, great. Thank you. Well, certainly there's a lot of community support. We got lots of letters and emails. So that was nice, nice to see. So thank you to everyone that submitted their feedback. I think we're all very anxious to get back together as a community and celebrate this summer. One of my initial reactions was just a concern for the existing restaurants. Certainly, we want to be creative about new restaurants, but also want to be protective of the restaurants we have. So was also very grateful to Burton's and Legal C for submitting their letters of support. So that's great. Thank you.
Yes, Burton's was the first one we received, which was exciting. If I may, I think, Emily, there was some, Mike might want to speak to, there's just some staffing in beer production concerns with a phased approach. So finding a comfort level with that might be helpful. So Mike, you might want to speak to that better than me.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Sherry. Absolutely understand and can appreciate the concern that both the town as well as the select board might have for, you know, will this work? Will it cause additional issues or unforeseen problems at Derby Street? Obviously, there's a few factors here and part of the rationale behind applying for the full 30-day permits. The first one that we're dealing with is obviously this is an open-air space. There's no tent. There's no roof. As we just saw, Memorial Day weekend was lousy. If per one-day permits, we had been open at that period of time, we would have had to have been closed and would have lost three days of use, not only for the space, but also for revenue and the like as well too. That's certainly part of the rationale why we put forward the full request, just expecting that a Hingham summer typically has 10% to 15% rainy weekends. And so we do expect some closure time. The other component of this, and I'm sure that especially the folks in the restaurant working group are aware, is that this year has been arguably quite challenging to hire staffing. And the concept of trying to augment our existing staffing with part-time staff and not being able to provide them a clear definition for how many days, how many hours that they might be able to work over a two-month period, which is a relatively contract period of time, is a bit concerning for Matt and I about who are we able to pick up? It certainly would limit our staffing pool to folks that probably already have full-time employment and that this would be, you know, an add-on type position. So that, you know, in combination with the weather and obviously the, in some cases, rather significant infrastructure costs that we are looking to incur here in the next seven days to get this up and operating both ourselves and Derby Street, from furniture to refrigeration systems and point-of-sale systems and everything else. You have our commitment that we want to make this work and make this a success for the town. And I can speak from my experience having run some considerably large beer gardens in the city of Boston, that we can do this in a professional and appropriate manner.
Let me ask you about your first comment, which is the inclement weather. So if there was, you know, bad weekend, would it be your intention to withdraw, to not have those, let's say, two or three days count against your cap of a maximum of 30?
Quite honestly, Joe, I think it depends on how many you issue us. I think we're prepared that there are going to be days that we are unable to open, built into the 30-number cap that is that we've currently applied for. But if you came back and, you know, gave us a lower number and we have the first two weeks of 15 are cut in half, then that would, I think would, one, create a bad test for to verify if this is working or not. But number two, it puts us back here at the next select board meeting, trying to rejigger the existing one-day applications. And I'm not sure if I would even be able to apply for those again, or if we would have to find a different way to do that considering the 30-day cap. I'm not, I'm not clear on how that would work.
So I guess I'm not sure I got an answer to the question, which was, you, it sounds like, I thought you were looking, from your comment, that you would, you really want 30 usable days. And so if it turned out that five of them could not be used, you sort of pull those permits and try to add them on, let's say, at the end. Am I right? Or you'll just recognize that those five days, for example, would not be available and we're down? Because once we issue the permit, we've issued the permit, I believe, whether or not you use it. And being able to pull it at the last minute, I just don't know procedurally how that works. And I respect that, hey, you know, you want usable days. I'm sure you've considered investing in umbrellas and that may or may not be a sufficient approach for rainy days. So I just wanted to be clear what you were seeking to achieve.
Well, I think you, you know, you're saying, I don't think that we are clear in understanding whether or not, once these are approved, say you approve all 30 tonight, and we end up with three weeks of consistent rain, whether or not those permits can be retracted and then added on to the end or not. I was, I'm not clear on if that's a possibility. If it is, I mean, ideally, we would like to have 30 operating days. But like I said, if what we find out is, you know, you approve all 30 and we're cruising along, I think we're expecting that we might have a Saturday that we have to close early. We might have a, you know, a Friday that we have to open up a little late, you know, because of weather. And in those situations, we would not be intending to, you know, make a last-minute call and then reach out to you urgently trying to rescind an existing permit. That's not our intent.
And clearly, part of this is, you know, Sherry, your call, whether or not Derby Streets would even allow it to go beyond the dates that you've already identified?
That's correct.
Correct.
Have you, do you have a position on that or you're?
Yes, I would be comfortable extending past the current schedule that has been provided because the tenant that's going into the rest of the kitchen space is not expected to open. And those are where we're getting, well, those are 180 seats. This will be 68 seats. So the difference is significant. But they're not expecting to open till late fall. So that would give us some breathing room in between when this is supposed to end, which is around Labor Day. We could go into September and still be really safe with seats, which is the biggest concern.
And Emily, when parking issues were looked at or other safety issues were looked at, were those dates important in terms of like the termination? Would, and would an extension affect your, the review that was done so far?
It would if Rested Kitchen were to reopen before this event ceased. So there's capacity there in terms of parking and wastewater because there are certain restaurant seats that are not right now in operation.
Yep. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Bill Ramsey for questions, then I'll get back to some of the issues that you've raised. But Bill, do you have any comments or questions on this?
So to Mike, I think what you're asking us is that like if we, if you have a washout weekend like we do over Memorial Day, could you, I think what you're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, could you put those two days into like a September or beyond the summertime? Is that kind of what you're looking for to use the 30?
Ideally, yes. I mean, if we found ourselves in a position where, you know, we were having to fully close for a day, you know, and lose a full day, then it would be ideal if we could pull that one day and reassign it to a day in the future.
So, yeah, I totally get it, what you're saying. And, you know, based on what I'm hearing from my colleagues, I don't speak for them. But I think the sentiment you're getting tonight is we will work with you on that. I think we would probably, because our legal authority is to only issue 30 days, we will probably have to check with town council on how that would work. So for example, if we, let's say, for example, you were going to go in over Memorial Day and we had that, you know, deluge of rain, you couldn't use those two days. We'll need to check with town council whether or not you can put, pull those two days back and then put them into like Memorial Day weekend or into days of September. So
Correct.
Your answer, I think we'd be willing to work with you on that if we legally can do it.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
And so in this, and my other question, Victoria and Sherry, good to see you again. I haven't seen you since my planning board days, so it was good. Are you guys going to have high-top tables and sit-down tables or a combination of the two or?
It's actually a combination of picnic tables and Adirondack chairs with upside-down wine barrels.
Great, great. Well, you know, I'm very familiar with the parking structure at Derby Street, having worked on it a year ago. And I know the green area well. I have been to Untold several times. I'm very impressed with their operation there. I think this is going to be wonderful. And it's great for Untold, you know, kind of an upcoming brewery on the South Shore. And obviously, anything we can do to get, draw people to Derby Streets is a plus. So looking forward to, looking forward to it.
Yeah. So Bill, I think, you know, I may have misdirected you because the primary question that was being asked was whether or not we should limit our initial granting of the one-day permits to a subset of the 30, something like half or 12, to see how it works before granting the rest. Because this would actually be, I think, well, it's unlike any other situation where with the restaurant opening group where a facility is open and expanded next to, adjacent to their current location. Here, there is no presence of this applicant and they are only going to be here on a one-day basis. And it's almost as if we are granting a new restaurant, a series of one-day licenses, which is a road that this board has not traveled down before. And I appreciate the concerns about making sure that you can get staffing. And we, from a regulatory side, were being cautious about what the impact is really going to be. And since people are getting food, literally, they may be walking through parking lots, you know, is that a safety issue? So we were looking to have a proving time to make sure that, you know, a proof of, proof of concept, if you will, to make sure that this works. Because we've not seen and we've not had that request. Because we've not seen and we've not had that request to have such a large number of one day permits issued. So that's sort of the balancing act that this board needs to discuss and consider.
And well, but yeah, I totally get it. And what I would say to to Mike is I I understand your concern. We we anticipate meeting every almost every probably every Tuesday that this summer, with the exception of maybe the week around July fourth. So if we start with the twelve, you certainly can come back and probably get additional ones later in the summer. I would, you know, obviously, what I would do if I was you, I would anticipate you know, getting additional days. I think we would probably only have concerns if something unexpected happens, like Joe referenced, something out of the ordinary or an exceptional circumstance that was unseen happened. But I think for your modeling, if things go according to plan, you you'll get your additional days. I'm pretty confident of that.
So in in terms of scheduling, what I would anticipate is that assuming that we issued some number of permits today, that we would hold another hearing on June twenty ninth. So it would be this month. And we would make a determination at that point based on whatever experience we've had about issuing the rest. So you there would not be an extended period of questioning of what's going on. And hopefully, that is a schedule that would make sense. I know that you'd be looking to have the first permit active as of June eighteenth. So we're really talking about, you know, going to June twenty ninth, when we'd have our subsequent review. So, Mike, does that make sense to you?
We're committed to making this work. We're committed to you know, be being a partner here. If if this is what makes the select board comfortable with our organization as a business partner, just like we have been for the town of Situ and for, you know, other communities, then we're willing to take that step.
That's great. And we do look at you as a partner. So so thank you.
Joe, could I just clarify one item on the rain dates? I'm messaging with Sharon Profetti, who's our liquor licensing expert, and she did say the applications would have had to specify an alternative date, which is difficult with a request like this to anticipate possible rain dates for for thirty different dates. But that they could come back to the board in the future to formally shift, you know, liquor one day licenses that weren't used if the board wanted to entertain that.
Well, that's actually an interesting approach. So if we issue, let's say, twelve, and then we should have, we should specify in those rain dates that are past the dates for the for those first twelve. There's no reason we couldn't include those in the initial issuance. So we would we would have covered that in the permits.
I think I think the only thing that, you know, not to certainly, that that might work. But my only potential concern, right, would be that there is one space on the form for a potential rain date. So if we start assigning rain dates now to June eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth to dates in late August, early September, and we get there and those dates rain out, there is no additional date spaces on the form. So do we do we do we just end up in a in an odd kind of revolving door where we're constantly coming back to you saying, hey, we've got a rain date here. Can we move this one out and into the to the following week?
So I what I suggest to you is that what I proposed makes you no worse off than not having any rain date. And it gives you the opportunity to be in a better position.
Fair enough.
My proposal is a no lose one for you.
Correct. I'm just wondering if if we if we specify a rain date and then it rains on
Rain date, which is a compliment. I mean, that's the issue that anyone getting a one day permit faces. But then at a minimum, there is a high likelihood that you will have succeeded in preserving that permit. As opposed to maybe you were not, you won't be able to do that at all.
Okay, very good.
So, Michelle, do we need to modify the language, the specific permits that are being requested? I'm assuming that we can vote, and then the permit language can actually be modified to include possible rain dates, so that the permits are not lost in the event of rain.
I think we can do that. And and what dates would you propose for the rain dates at the end of the season?
Well, I I just think they would just build right on after. So that the times, let me just pull up the, so we're talking about it would begin June eighteenth, and then the twelve days would put them through Sunday, July eleventh. So then the first permit should be for the following Friday after July eleventh, would that would be the rain date. And then you you would just add it add them on. I mean, that'd be pretty easy to do.
Mr. Fisher, would it be that that date, or would it be the date at the end of the flight of thirty? Because we we have a permit in currently in request for, you know, weeks in July and the end of August because we put in thirty. So would it go to the end of August or the end of?
Right, I got you. So what I'm suggesting is that since our initial vote this evening is likely to be for twelve, ending on July eleventh, those will be the permits that will be issued, and it would be subsequent to those dates. So in other words, subsequent to July eleventh, that the rain dates would kick in. And so and we'll know ahead of time if it rained.
Sure.
And then and then you just proceed proceed that way. And then and again, if you're not comfortable with this, you simply don't add in a rain date. And then we have to deal with the issue about how you preserve those permits. I'm just trying to get you an option.
No, no, I appreciate that. And, yeah, I, you know, the this permitting approach obviously is not is not perfect for the situation. I think we're all trying to make it work as best as we can. So I appreciate that.
Okay. Any members of the public have comments or questions? I am seeing none. So I'm gonna move, make the motion here. So I move to approve the issuance of twelve separate special one day wine and malt beverage licenses to Untold Brewing LLC, the applicant, for a series of events known as The Green at Derby Street Shops to be held on consecutive Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, beginning on Friday, June eighteen, twenty twenty one, and ending on Sunday, July eleven, twenty twenty one, or such or such subsequent date as may be allowed by rain dates as provided in the permit applications. The hours of the events shall be limited to Fridays and Saturdays from twelve P M. to nine P M. and Sundays from twelve P M. to seven P M. And such licenses shall be further subject to the following conditions. The event location is shown as The Green, located between REI and Coles at the Derby Street Shops, which space is approved for use for community events by the modified special permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals dated August twenty twenty twenty, issued to WSM Hingham Properties LLC and shown on the Restricted Use Area Plan dated March nine, twenty twenty, and approved in connection with the special permit. In order to comply with the special permit, the event location shall be modified in order to provide a minimum of six feet wide pathway between the rear and main parking fields. Access shall be maintained to the fire sprinkler connection on the Coles parking, I'm sorry, Coles building facade. All applicable permits shall be obtained from the Board of Health. The applicant shall request and representatives of the Hingham Restaurant Reopening Working Group shall conduct an inspection prior to the first event date. Is there a second?
Second.
We come to vote. Liz Klein.
Hi.
Bill Ramsey.
Hi.
Joe Fisher.
Hi.
We are done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think you can tell there's a there's a lot of excitement about this opportunity. And The Green at Derby Street Shops should be a great success. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda is to file a petition with the General Court to amend the Town Administrator Special Act, which is chapter two sixty three of the Acts of twenty sixteen, to replace the words, quote, Board of Selectmen, unquote, with, quote, Select Board, unquote, in accordance with the twenty twenty one Annual Town Meeting, Article twenty one. Michelle, could you walk us through this and what it means?
Sure. So this is following up on action taking taken at this May's annual town meeting to change the term Board of Selectmen to Select Board in our town bylaws, in the Town Administrator Special Act, and in other town documents and communications, as well as to use more gender neutral terms going forward. This piece of the article authorized the Select Board to file a petition with the state legislature to change the T A Special Act. We need state legislation to change state legislation. So an additional action beyond town meeting, town meetings vote is required. So right now, we're basically just asking the board to to approve following that. And then administratively, our office will take care of submitting the necessary documents to our state reps to get that process started.
Do we have any idea the timing, how long it takes to go through this process?
I don't know. It really depends what else is on the docket legislatively. But this is several towns across the state have taken these steps recently. So it shouldn't be something that's controversial.
Great. Bill Ramsey, any questions?
No questions.
Liz Klein.
No questions.
Then I'll take a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Before I do that, any members of the public have comments or questions on this? Seeing none, I will now take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to file a petition with the General Court to amend the Town Administrator Special Act, chapter two sixty three of the Acts of twenty sixteen, to replace the words Board of Selectmen with Select Board in accordance with the twenty twenty one Annual Town Meeting, warrant Article twenty one.
We have a second.
Second.
Now we vote. Bill Ramsey.
Hi.
Liz Klein.
Hi.
Joe Fisher.
Hi.
It's approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to proclaim June twenty twenty one, this current month, as Pride Month in the town of Hingham. I just want to make a brief remark, and then I'd like to turn this over to Liz Klein. Pride Month is celebrated annually in June to honor the nineteen sixty nine Stonewall riots and works to achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for persons who identify as lesbian, gay, bi, trans, queer, or questioning plus L G B T Q plus. Memorials are held during this month for those members of the community who have been who have been lost to hate crimes or HIV AIDS. And one of the purposes of the commemorative month of June is to recognize the impact that L G B T LGBTQ plus individuals have had on history, locally, nationally, and internationally. And I just want to mention a few of those individuals. One that immediately comes to mind is Jason Collins, who played for eight teams in the NBA, including the Boston Celtics during the twenty twelve thirteen season. And he was the first openly gay player to appear in a game in any of the four major American sports. Another prominent person that comes to mind is Tammy Baldwin. She became the first openly LGBTQ plus woman elected to the U S House of Representatives. That was in nineteen ninety nine, and then elected to the U S Senate in two thousand thirteen, where she currently serves representing the state of Wisconsin. And of course, another prominent person that comes to mind is Tim Cook, the C E O of Apple. The impact of LGBTQ plus individuals deserves recognition and celebration this month of June. And I'd like to ask a select board member, Liz Klein, to say a few words about Pride Month.
Great, thank you. As many of you know, June is Pride Month. It is a time for honoring those who have bravely fought for equality for LGBTQ plus people over many years. It is a time for celebrating our LGBTQ plus neighbors who make our community a better place and recognizing the progress we have made as a society. It is a time to embrace and affirm our LGBTQ plus community. This particular June, we remember that fifty two years ago, the uprising at the Stonewall Inn in New York City sparked a movement, a call to action that continues to inspire us to live up to our nation's promise of liberty and justice for all. This June, we also celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of Boston Pride, and we mark with sadness the fortieth anniversary of the AIDS epidemic in the United States, which affected so many in the LGBTQ plus community. This Pride Month twenty twenty one, the Hingham Select Board affirms our commitment to uphold the dignity of all people. We will reaffirm our commitment every June and pledge to take action every day of every month until every member of our community feels welcome, included, and respected for who they are.
Thank you, Liz. Bill, did you want to make some comments?
Yeah, I would just echo Liz's excellent, very well stated. And Joe, thank you for your comments, too. It's wonderful that we have such a it's a great local pride project and the great work they do. And it's wonderful to drive around town and see so many flags and so much support for their efforts. So want to join Liz in her comments and yours as well, Joe. And it's wonderful that we're able to celebrate this in Hingham.
So we have prepared a a declaration, I'm sorry, a proclamation. And I'd like each of us to take turns reading. Bill, starting with you.
Whereas Hingham is a community that values diversity and inclusion and is committed to equal rights and opportunities for all its residents. And whereas Hingham recognizes the important contributions of its LGBTQ plus residents to the town's history, culture, economy, and civic life. And whereas June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one marks the fifty second anniversary of the Stonewall riots, an event that gave rise to the beginning of the gay rights movement in the United States. And whereas June is now recognized across the country and in the Commonwealth as Pride Month. And
Liz?
Whereas we celebrate the accomplishments of the LGBTQ plus community towards securing important rights and freedoms, often through struggle and adversity. And whereas we remain vigilant against continued oppression and discrimination against the LGBTQ plus community and against any new political efforts to overturn these accomplishments. And whereas we affirm our support for LGBTQ residents, including our students and our employees, vendors, and visitors, and stand with them to protect their civil rights and ability to live openly without fear. And whereas we congratulate the members of the Hingham Pride Project for their efforts to increase LGBTQ plus visibility and to support LGBTQ plus citizens, particularly our LGBTQ plus youth through the distribution of over four thousand Progress Pride flags to individuals, families, and organizations throughout Hingham. And
And whereas we acknowledge the important efforts of the Hingham School Committee, the school department leadership, teachers and staff to support our LGBTQ plus students and to help all students meet core educational competencies that prioritize social emotional learning, health and safety, and respect for others. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty one as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Voted this eighth day of June twenty twenty one, Joseph M. Fisher Chair, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to receive an update on the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility Project.
Joe, do we need to vote to proclaim it?
That's a good question. Michelle, do we need to vote or just having us all sign the proclamation once it's
Yes, please. There's just a short vote to proclaim it. To proclaim the month in the town.
So I will accept the So I will accept the motion. I'll make the motion to proclaim June 2021 as Pride Month in the town of Hingham. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to the update on the South Shore Country Club Maintenance Facility Project. Is Kevin Whalen on?
I am here, Joe.
Great. Kevin, if you could give us an update?
Sure. Along with me is Chris Rardi, the designer, Taylor McDonald, the owner's project manager, and J.R. Frye, the town engineer, and Christine Smith, the chairman of the Country Club Management Committee.
You have an answer?
Yep. So since we came in last month, we've had a meeting with Tom, and I think at that point, we went over the project, how we had pared down the project to just the 7,000-square-foot maintenance building, in that we were working to get that project into the $2.2 million budget that the annual town meeting appropriated in April, or June, rather, of 2020. Since that time, you know, the construction, the headwinds of rising construction costs have really made it difficult for us to get into the, to get below that $2.2 million number. So as we have begun to look at the project, what we felt would be a pathway forward, we met with Tom Mayo, and he asked me to come before you to kind of review the plan that we have to move this project forward. As we all know, the current maintenance facility needs to be replaced, so this is an emergency and why we appropriated the funding before we have the design and the estimated cost. So we went over this with Tom, and what we were asking to do is move forward with the project and actually split the project into two, which would allow the project to move forward. And by splitting the project into two, what we would do is complete the site work first and then go out to bid later on. And we're hoping within, we'd probably go out to bid in January or February, that would hopefully allow the construction markets and material costs to stabilize as we move into the spring construction schedule, you know, next season. And if we do, at that point in time, still need additional funding, we would be able to access, put an article into the annual town meeting to get additional funds. I think there's a few things that have happened. Obviously, the interest rates have gone down from when we had the original cost, which would be helpful to us, to allow us to afford this, as we are an enterprise account and have to pay back any borrowed funds. And I think the second thing is our financial situation at the Country Club is significantly better positioned than it was, you know, even a few years ago. So I think, you know, moving forward, what we're asking for the committee is just to allow us to move forward, with the board, rather, is to allow us to move forward with the project by splitting it into two. One, just doing the site work construction first, that will allow us, and I think Taylor can speak a little bit to this, Taylor McDonald from Palmeron Associates, that would allow us to, you know, move the project forward, get going, and really not kind of create a large delay to the finish of the project. And Taylor, if you want to speak to the mechanism of splitting the project.
Yep, you're on mute.
Okay, Taylor, we can't hear you.
Yep, there you go. There we go.
Thanks, Kevin. You did very well outlining that for me. But yes, we were really splitting up this, what we were calling as the first phase anyway, is just the maintenance building, and then hopefully we're adding some ancillary buildings to that for some more storage of equipment. So now we're calling this a 1A, and that's getting just the site work done, so everything under the ground done and making the site pad ready. And then 1B would be the actual building. In speaking to the estimator, they basically told us we'd be crazy to go out to bid right now. The prices they were seeing coming in for construction were all coming in over budget, and it's just a very tumultuous time out there in terms of putting things out on the street. So really, we thought that putting it out just for the site work would be a great idea. First thing, it keeps the project moving, and in terms of, you know, the site work, you know, we're not seeing site costs going up too much. And it also kind of levels the playing field. Instead of making it a Chapter 149 project, it's a Chapter 30B project. So we're going to get a little more action, we're hoping, from maybe smaller site contractors, local site contractors that want to come in and do the work. We're also avoiding about a 10% markup that a GC would be carrying for the site contractor by going this route and just bringing in a site contractor first. So we're hoping to see some savings there in the site work by, you know, going this way. You know, this also makes the bidding of the building after more attractive, that a contractor doesn't have to come in and get entrenched in the site work. They can come in and put up a building quickly, get in, get out. So we're hoping it makes it more attractive for site, the site contractors, and then when we get to the building, it's more attractive there as well. So we think this is a good, cost-effective solution to keep the project moving and then get us through this kind of hazy area of construction cost, get us through that, and be able to put the building up after that.
Thank you. Michelle, are there any concerns from the administrative side on this?
No, I don't think so. We're confident in Kevin and the team that he's assembled and their approach to the project.
Yep. I didn't see any problems. Bill Ramsey?
Yeah, this is absolutely the right approach, and I appreciate you taking this approach. I've spoken with several pretty prominent contractors and locally about a couple different projects, and the one theme they're all telling me is the cost of supplies right now is double to triple what it was pre-pandemic, especially wood. So the fact you're going to break this down and wait a little bit, I think is great. I appreciate it, because it's going to, hopefully, cost of supplies will settle in '22. So this is a good approach, and I appreciate you breaking it down like this and going at it this way.
Liz?
I agree. I think the approach makes a lot of sense. We all know it's very expensive to build right now, so I definitely agree with the approach. Could you just talk a little bit about the timeline, just so the public kind of knows when the project is going to start and finish, and if it'll impact, you know, next spring and summer at the Country Club?
Yeah, sure. So we're hoping to get this, or really looking to put this out on the street about the middle of June and get some pricing back July, mid-July, and hoping to start around mid-August for the site work portion only. And then, you know, it could be five or six months later that we look at getting the actual, you know, building out.
Okay.
We still have to pinpoint the second, the 1B part of the phase, but it would, you know, probably be after Fall Town Meeting.
So Liz, to your point as far as the impact and timing, I think the good news here is that we're going to get the site work done, and then pretty much, what is it, about 10 or 15 feet around where the building will, you know, the foundation will be poured, you know, all the other work around that will be completed probably by, you know, I would say December possibly, or January, maybe a little later, but it's in the more of the off-season for our operation. So, and then, you know, when the other contractor will come in, you know, they will just be working on that limited space that they have to build the building on.
Great, thank you.
I mean, I've heard not just from local contractors, but up and down the East Coast, you know, it's all over. So this is, I think, a very prudent approach. I really appreciate your raising this. Any comments or questions from members of the public? Seeing none, there's no vote here, so we will move to the next item where there is a vote with the same group here. The next item is to authorize the town administrator or the assistant town administrator to sign the Seventh Amendment of Lease Agreement with Vista Verde Corp. for the restaurant at South Shore Country Club. Kevin, do you want to pick up on this one?
So this is a continuation of, you know, the relief that we have provided the vendor or the lease, the person that leases, the company that leases the restaurant and function space. We have, you know, provided some relief past year. This would just be a continuation of three months of relief for them. They would still completely, they would pay the percentage of rent of 3.8% without a cap, and, you know, it would be just for three months. And we, at that point, the, any relief would be over at that point in time. They had, they did meet their, you know, the 200, they met 230,000 of revenue, which put them over the $8,000 of rent that they usually pay. So how the amendment works is that there's a floor of 2,650 that, no matter how much revenue they have, they have to pay that 2,650, and there's, there is no ceiling. They have, they have been very busy. The functions are definitely picking up. We actually even have, you know, people renting the bowling alley for company outings and things like that in the middle of June and July, which never happens. So I think there's, you know, some pent-up demand out there. So I don't expect, you know, the low end of this, but, you know, you never know as far as how things have been going in the past year. So the leasey Vista Verde is, you know, on board with the terms of the agreement and just continuing that agreement for three months. I think it gives them the downside protection that they're looking for in case there is any issues that might persist with the, you know, current situation.
I just want to add that word around town is the Country Club and the restaurant are a real success. People love it, and not just Hingham residents. It's, you're really developing a wide reputation. So really, hats off to the way this has been managed. Liz?
Appreciate it.
Liz, any comments or questions?
No questions. I agree. Thank you for all you're doing at the Country Club, and Kevin was kind enough to give me a tour yesterday. And I understand that the restaurant owner is a very good partner. So, you know, this seems like a very low-risk situation and something we should move forward with.
Great. Bill Ramsey?
No questions.
Members of the public, comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none, I will accept the motion on the Seventh Amendment.
I'd make a motion to authorize a town administrator or the assistant town administrator to sign the Seventh Amendment of the Lease Agreement with Vista Verde Corporation for the restaurant at South Shore Country Club.
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Let me come to a vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye. It's approved. Thank you. And Kevin, thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Good, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have Assistant Harbor Master Appointments, and is Ken Corson on the line, that he can give us the names and discuss this?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ken.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. As you know, as assistant, as a harbor master for the town of Hingham, I rely on part-time assistant harbor masters to aid with waterways management and to provide law enforcement, fire rescue, and first aid services on our waterways, islands, and shore fronts. Before you are seven candidates, Ryan Baring, Joseph Chase, John Crenier, Drew Galanakis, Daniel Martini, Chris Salinas, and Darius Veramundi. The decision to recommend these appointments is based on their education, training, experience, voting knowledge, and other qualifications. This part, this position is a part-time seasonal, working under the discretion of the harbor master. These candidates have successfully completed the hiring process, which consists of an interview, background check, psychological exam, and a physical exam. For the above reasons, I recommend the appointment of these individuals to the position of assistant harbor master.
And Ken, what would be the term of their appointment?
So it's a, statutorily, it's a three-year term. So it'll be for three years.
Okay. And do we currently have assistant harbor masters who are in partway through their three-year term?
That's correct. Currently, we have eight assistant harbor masters that are at different stages in their three-year term.
Okay. And either Ken or Michelle, from a budgetary standpoint, is this consistent with what the town has budgeted, if we were to move forward with this?
So I can answer that question. We have an allotted amount of money for the assistant harbor masters, so whether we have one or 30, we only have so much funds to be expended for them. These individuals, again, are part-time and seasonal. They're only mainly working during the voting season. So some individuals might work one shift, four hours during the week. Some others might work a total of 40 hours, but at the end of the budget cycle, we only have, you know, X number of dollars, so that's all we'll spend. Or we'll only put them on the schedule enough to do what we need to do and stay within the budget.
Got it. Thank you. Liz Klein, any questions?
No questions. It sounds like a thorough interview process, so thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
No questions.
Any members of the public have questions on this, on these assistant harbor master appointments? Seeing none, I will accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ryan Baring, Joseph Chase, John Crenier, Drew Galanakis, Daniel Martini, Chris Salinas, and Darius Veramundi as assistant harbor masters for a three-year term ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Come to vote, Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye. It's approved. Ken, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we move to the special police officer appointments. Do we have Chief Jones or Deputy Chief O'Shea on the line?
Evening, Joe. It's...
There we go.
Here.
Great. Can you explain what is being asked for here?
Absolutely. So we have two additional individuals who we're putting before you to be appointed as special police officers. We did the initial round before. These two were not quite ready yet. They are now. They're ready to be appointed. It's a one, well, less than one-year term at this point through April of next year. David Horton is one of the two. He is a retired full-time police officer of the town of Hingham, where he served for well over 30 years, retiring as a sergeant for the police department. And we have Steve Wigglemuth, who is a retired state police sergeant, who is a current defensive tactics instructor for the state and a current firearms instructor for the state. He also sits on the state board for firearms instructors as well. So having them both on board is an asset for the department as well as the community.
And what types of activities, assignments, would these special police officers be given?
Sure. So currently, they assist with large-scale events, like, you know, for example, the Fourth of July parade we have upcoming. They'll be able to assist with that. Any other construction or security details that we have as well. So they're basically augment the full-time police staff.
And same question I asked before to Ken Corson, in terms of the budget, are these appointments consistent with what is currently budgeted by the town?
They are. So any private details will be paid for by the individual hiring the officers for the event, and we're budgeted for events such as the Fourth of July, et cetera, that, you know, they'd just be one of the number of people that we have allotted for that event, so.
Great. Thank you. Bill Ramsey, any questions?
Just to comment, I worked with Sergeant Horton for several years on the traffic committee, and he's a great guy. Good to see him doing well. So ready to make the motion when you're ready.
Great. Liz Klein?
No questions.
Any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, I am ready to receive a motion. Mr. Ramsey?
I would make a motion to appoint, let me just pull up the vote list again here. I'd make a motion to appoint David Horton and Stephen Wiglemuth as special police officers for the town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2022.
Do a second?
Second.
Come to vote, Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye. It's approved. Dave, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, chief.
Next item. Next item on our agenda is the COVID-19 update. Michelle.
Yes, thank you. All right. So I'll start with the data. As of today, confirmed COVID-19 cases in Massachusetts totaled totaled 662,343. The seven day average of new COVID-19 cases in the state has been trending downward since early April. The statewide positivity rate is down to 0.52%. And the seven day average of confirmed deaths from COVID-19 has dropped to 4.5 from a peak of around 175. The numbers are continuing to look really good. According to public health data from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health released last week, the town's designation is now actually gray for the first time. That's even lower than green, indicating 10 or few new cases. There have been six new cases of COVID-19 in Hangum over the past 14 days. Of just a few weeks ago or a few months ago, we were talking about cases in the 80s every two weeks. And there's a total of 1,965 cases in Hangum since the start of the pandemic. The average daily incidence rate for the town of Hangum dropped to 1.8 per 100,000 residents. And our percent positivity rate was down to 0.46 for the past 14 days. In terms of the vaccine rollout, according to DPH's Daily COVID-19 Vaccine Report, over 3.8 million people in Massachusetts have been fully vaccinated as of today. Vermont and Massachusetts continue to lead the way nationwide in terms of percent of the population that is fully vaccinated, according to Johns Hopkins University, with Massachusetts at almost 53%. As of last week, 59% of Hangum residents have been fully vaccinated. So we're slightly ahead of the state. And I wanted to share a few notes on on some particular age groups in town. The Hangum Health Department and the School Department worked together to organize vaccination clinics with the state at Hangum High School and Hangum Middle School in recent weeks to successfully vaccinate over 400 students aged 12 and up. 67% of Hangum residents ages 16 to 19 are fully vaccinated. So our young people are taking advantage of this. However, our health department noticed that the vaccination rate of Hangum residents aged 75 plus has started to lag behind the state average, which is concerning. 69% of Hangum residents 75 plus are fully vaccinated compared to 90% of this age group at the state level. Our health and elder services staff are working together to get messages out to seniors in our community to ensure that they know where and how to access the COVID-19 vaccine. Local options include CVS and Walgreen locations in Hangum, as well as the Hangum Center Pharmacy. The state's mobile vaccine program is also an option now. Residents looking for help accessing the vaccine should call the state's Vaccination Central Intake Line at 833-983-0485. And people can also contact our senior center staff at 781-804-2292, and they can help them get access to the vaccine. So we'll publish those messages through Harbor Media, through the Senior Center Newsletter, through recorded phone messages and other means to get the word out in the coming weeks. And then some final updates on reopening and public meetings. So on June 1st, Town Hall and the Senior Center returned to full in-person staffing. This coming Monday, June 14th, Town Hall and Town Offices, the Senior Center and the Recreation Department's Fitness Room will reopen to the public. Unvaccinated individuals should continue wearing masks and practicing social distancing when accessing municipal facilities. Doing so will help protect themselves and others from COVID-19. On June 1st, Hangum Public Library opened to the public during daytime hours. This coming Monday, June 14th, the library will return to a normal operating schedule and will resume evening hours. You can find more information about the library's reopening details and guidelines on their website, www.hangumlibrary.org. And then, as we reported at the last meeting, Governor Baker filed filed a bill on May 25, 2021 to extend provisions related to the open meeting law, allowing public bodies to temporarily continue to meet remotely through the summer. However, as of today, that legislation has not been approved. We understand from our state officials that it may not be approved before the state of emergency is lifted next Tuesday, June 15th. So starting Tuesday, the 15th, we want to let all boards and committees know that they should be prepared to resume meeting 100% in person unless otherwise notified by our office. So we are, and we're conducting a review of our technology to look at different options in the future, but we just want to make sure we're going to work with folks. I do expect that that legislation will eventually be passed, but there may be a window of time where we're we're going to be required to be in person until other options are available. That's it. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Michelle. And just, I want to follow up on two points there. First, with respect to the meetings. So the meetings starting next week, starting Tuesday, June 15th, unless there's legislation, those town boards, committees, and this also applies to school committees that are subject to the open meeting law, they need to be in person, which means that notices of those meetings, which will maybe posted as soon as this week, I think as a cautionary matter, need to post those meetings as being held in person. And if it turns out that the legislature acts in a timely manner that they can be held on Zoom, then those notices can be updated. But in the absence of legislation at this point, the postings that need to go out this week should be assuming that all those meetings are going to be in-person meetings. And the second point I want to cover, which was getting back to the seniors and the percentage that are not vaccinated. Michelle, are we doing enough to reach out to our seniors? I know we, you know, we're posting information, but I'm talking about either phone calls or knocking on doors just to make sure people are okay and that they don't need any more assistance. Is that is that something that the senior center is handling or is it something that this board should be looking at so that there's meaningful outreach to to seniors who might need it?
Yeah, I think Jennifer Young and her staff in the Elder Services Department will be taking the lead on getting the message out along with our health department. But they often use tools like the recorded messages that go to thousands of seniors over a certain age in town and working with Harbor Media to put public service announcements on the on TV on our local channels, putting things out through the newsletter. But we are trying to look into the numbers a little bit more to understand why the lag is there. For example, we wanted to make sure we're reaching out to Lynn and Ponce as well to make sure that those numbers are included. Because this this gap is odd. It's sort of increased over the last few weeks and we just, early on, when the vaccine was harder to access and the online platforms through the state were a little bit more difficult, we're wondering if some people simply gave up. And now you can literally walk into CBS in downtown Hangum and get one. So we want to make sure that people understand there's there's fewer barriers now to getting it. So we will work hard to get that message out.
Great. And I know Carol Meyer is on the line. And so anything you can do, Carol, in assisting us, and I'll be, I can give you a call after the meeting to go over things. That would be really helpful. Thank you. Liz Klein, any any questions for Michelle?
No questions. Thank you, Michelle. I am meeting with Jennifer Young tomorrow, so I can follow up on that as well.
Oh, great. Bill Ramsey.
No questions, Michelle. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we come to the portion of the meeting for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone, any public comment? I see no hands raised. I hear no voices. So moving on to reports of the select board. And I actually want to start, which is not the way it's done, but I wanted to note that last Friday, June 4th, was a sad day for Massachusetts law enforcement. In the city of Worcester, a police officer, Manny Familia, tragically drowned in the line of duty while valiantly attempting to save the life of a 14 year old boy who was drowning in a large pond. Both the officer and the boy lost their lives. Closer to home in Braintree, police officers, as well as a police canine, responded to a domestic violence call, which immediately shifted to a fleeing armed fugitive situation in the adjoining woods. Officers were ambushed and fired upon by the suspect, resulting in two officers being shot multiple times. Officer Matthew Donahue was released from the hospital after undergoing surgery. The other officer who was shot, Officer Billy Cushing, is still hospitalized, but is expected to fully recover from his injuries. A Braintree Police Canine kit. And the suspect died of the injuries they suffered in the exchange of gunfire. These incidents are a reminder that we should not take for granted the service of our public safety officers. The risks they face are real. They deserve our support and our respect. Thank you. Liz, any, anything to report?
Thank you. Last Friday, I attended the Hangum Downtown Association meeting. Things are going well there. Springham at the Historical Society was a big success. They were celebrating the high school seniors downtown in various ways, posting pictures in the the store windows and such. They're getting ready for Fourth of July and summer sidewalk sales at the end of July. We, the whole select board was able to attend the Hangum High graduation on Saturday, which was a wonderful celebration for our seniors and Hangum High. And I am continuing to meet with various department heads at Town Hall and certainly very grateful to everyone giving me tours and spending time. So met with Kevin Whelan yesterday and I have several meetings the rest of this week as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have the advantage over Bill. Bill starts and there's COVID. So I'm glad you're having, you're taking advantage of of being able to now see people. Bill Ramsey.
Yeah, just a couple of things, you know, since we last met, we had Memorial Day ceremony. And it was a wonderful ceremony. One just wanted to comment on, you know, Joe, your comments were wonderful on Memorial Day, as were Colonel Retired Anderson. And I wanted just, you know, say how lucky we are to have Senior Chief Keith German leading our Department of Veterans Affairs in town. He does a wonderful job. And anybody who went to that ceremony had to walk away impressed with the way he put that together. Secondly, you know, this weekend, U Sports kind of comes through a wrap up in Hangum. And I had the the great privilege of being assistant coach for the Reg, which was sponsored by the Hangum Firefighters Association. And, you know, at the end of these seasons, I'm just reminded by the wonderful volunteers we have running our U Sports programs with lacrosse, softball, youth baseball, and just how hard those volunteers worked to give the kids normalcy in such crazy times as past spring. And lastly, for those who haven't seen it, there is a bear. Boo Boo the Bear is had been seen in situating Cohasset, and he's approaching Wapatack State Park. I know the police department put out some information about that tonight, but I often walk my dog in Wapatack in the morning, and I know a lot of people have their dogs off leash and just, you know, want to get the word out that this bear is is in the park and they should be careful if they're gonna go down some of these less traveled trails and areas of the park.
That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Bill. And the police have posted guidance in terms of how how to how to interact or not interact. And particularly if you have pets. So I would suggest consulting what the England Police Department has posted. We are conducting Talent Bank interviews this week and next week. We have a number of town committees, boards that need to be staffed by local residents. And so if you have not yet submitted your resume or filled in a Talent Bank application, which is available at the Select Board website, I encourage you to do so. We're we're doing interviews this Thursday and then I believe the following Wednesday, the 16th. Our next, other than these interviews, our next board meeting is scheduled for the 15th of June. And in accordance with the state law changes, that will be in person unless the special legislation passes the legislature. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe? Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all.